Call the meeting to order, the May 18th, 2023, meeting of the Rockport Planning Board. Time is now 6:31. All members are present, and this is our first live meeting. So, welcome to the real world, from the virtual world, everyone. We are going to start with the public comment period, where we give members of the public the ability to comment on any matter relating to planning. But we don't seem, I know there are two people out there in the audience, Penny Pilzer and Bob Visnick, but they're not here for public comment, they're here for items on the agenda, so we'll just skip over that and go to the next part of the meeting, which is the approval of the review and approval, or with changes or corrections, of the May 4, 2023 meeting minutes. Any changes, corrections, deletions to those minutes?
Minor stuff.
Okay.
Very minor. Under number two, the second paragraph, a motion was made by Simmons to accept the minutes. You should make that plural.
Wait, where is this?
Under item number two of minutes. The first line of the second paragraph.
Okay, I see. Yeah, I think just for the purposes of, I know our, I know our transcriber is going to have the benefit of the 1623 recording, but just so she can recognize your voice for the first time when you speak, identify yourself, okay? That goes, so that was, that makes sense, yeah.
And then, let's see what I'm here. Under number four, the discussion on the Cove, the end of that first paragraph at the very bottom of the page, you know, there were-
That would be page two?
I think that's, is that page two? Yeah, no, it's page-
Bottom of page one.
Page one, okay.
There were letters of support, and there have been some concerns about the parking conditions. I think, more accurately, it was really about the parking on the streets, specifically King and Beach. Temporary parking used by the guest offload. The way it's described currently, it suggests that it's, has to do with the off-site parking.
So, the concerns that you say, that you recall were expressed were about on-street, on-street parking, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. On-street, all right.
Yeah, that last sentence, I think he was trying to say the approval is centered around the 53 parking spaces. It says not connected with the inn, but I think it's implying that they're off-site, not, not that they're not connected with the use.
They're not, right, they're off-site.
Yeah.
Any other corrections, additions, or deletions?
I think I have a few, but they're more grammatical, mostly. Problem is, I sent this to myself, and it removed all of the tracking changes, colors, and I can't find them. One second.
You, you want to go to somebody else where you're looking?
Yeah, go ahead.
Anybody else? No? Nope, so I guess you're, you're it, Bob.
There's just, there's a couple stray numbers there that are sitting out there, at least on my copy, a one and a two for numbering some paragraphs, if you saw that.
Oh, okay.
I assume those are-
But those don't show up on, on these hard copies?
No, they don't?
I don't see them.
That's interesting.
Yeah.
All right, well, I didn't have anything really substantive, I think it's mostly just, there's a lot of run-on sentences, that we just need some periods in there.
But still, intelligible?
Yeah.
Okay. So, do we have a motion to approve the May 4, 2023 minutes with changes as suggested?
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes as amended.
Motion by Harry to approve his amendment, as amended, seconded by Tom. Roll call, vote. Peter?
Abstain.
Bob?
Uh, yeah, aye.
Okay.
Harry?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
I'll vote in favor, approved 4-0 with changes, and Peter abstains.
I don't think you need a roll call, if it's not on Zoom.
Maybe not, but it's just habit.
Okay.
So, okay. Let's go to the next item on the agenda, which is, well, why don't we, if you don't mind, because you're like, five minutes, Bob. Well, if you don't mind Penny, we'll just take care of Bob, and, because it's a, it's a threshold question, and basically, the, this is number four, so we'll take that before number three. The Cove at Rockport LLC, we had a discussion at the last meeting, Mr. Visnick, who's the legal representative of the Cove, came here and raised the question about whether site plan review by the planning board was required at all, not even whether it's a major construction project or a minor construction project, but whether it was required. And after that, after that discussion, the issue was presented to our town council, citing to the applicable, the only applicable provision of the site plan review, which would, would pertain here, which is about improvements were done, you know, within a five-year period, I won't go into all the details. But long story short, the, the matter was reviewed by town council, and I think all of you have seen the email, and town council concluded that site plan review is not required under that particular section, for a variety of reasons, which I don't necessarily have to go into right now, but it just didn't apply to this particular use, and the, these improvements. And all she said was, well, it could, it could have site plan approval for the parking, but she did not know that you had 50-plus, sort, you know, parking spots, which are more than adequate to accommodate not only the existing space at the inn, but also the expansion of what I, what is it, eight rooms? Yeah, eight rooms, so she didn't know that, but we know that, and it's obviously, parking is not an issue here. So, that being said, you know, there's nothing for this board to do, and I have emailed the building inspector and informed him of the decision, so I haven't heard back from him, but I'm assuming that he has, you know, accepted what town council has said, and you won't have any site plan issues when you go out for your billing permit.
Thank you very much.
Okay, you're welcome. Good luck.
Thanks. Have a great night.
Take care, Bob.
Thanks.
Okay, next item, which is item three, which you'll now, we'll talk about, is Penny Pilzer of the Government Bylaws Committee will discuss the most recent draft of the Stormwater Management Bylaw, Section 8D Dog, and I know they've been working really hard on this, and agonizing over it, and being bounced among different boards who don't want to have anything to do with it, and it just keeps on coming back to the planning board, so we're trying to figure out a way to, to do all this, and not only have the permit issuing authority, but also the administration by someone other than the planning board. So, Penny, why don't you, you know, say your, tell us what you've been up to there at the Government and Bylaws.
Well, I mean, basically-
Is your microphone on?
Uh, it's green.
Okay, good.
Does it work now, I think, now?
Yeah, maybe you need to speak into it.
Yeah, okay, I'll speak into it a little bit more. Basically, we're coming before you and asking your, for your support, for the latest iteration of the Bylaw 8D, which is about permitting in the, when there has been a land disturbance. And we have been around the houses about this, but most recently, DPW came back, or rather, their consultants, Weston and Sampson, came back to us and said, here's what we think you ought to do. It ought to be much, a much lower level of land disturbance that requires a permit.
Lower, I'm sorry, lower than what?
Well, we had 7,500 square feet. The previous bylaw was 20,000 square feet. The state minimum is an acre, which is about 40,000 square feet. So, getting, hearing that this is state-of-the-art, and it is what DPW is willing to get behind, we said, well, all right, but that's going to be a lot more permits, because it's just going to be a lot more, construction sites will need a permit. And so, we are proposing that we will indeed drop it down to 2,000 square feet of disturbance, and I will say that the original proposal had been 500 square feet for-
500?
Yes, for a minor permit, and then, or 2,000 for a major permit. We, after discussion, DPW agreed that it would be, that the 500 square feet was just too much to ask under the, these circumstances, that the 2,000 square foot permit, which would be determined by the planning board, rather than some other town official, as the 500 square foot might have been. And this major permit is going to require a stormwater management permit application, a erosion and sedimentation plan, and an operation and maintenance plan, that will be, will be outlined, the requirements for which would be outlined in the regulations, which DPW says they have money in the budget to fund the consultants, to basically help the planning board write. And then, there was a discussion of how we were going to enforce it, and I, I, there has not been a, a complete decision on this, but my understanding is that the town is discussing contract terms with someone currently employed by the, by the town, to take on these duties, and that, at least theoretically, that is going to happen, so that the planning board will have assistance from someone who has a little more, you know, expertise, and, and whose job it is to go out there and enforce, and also to help with looking at the sites and so on, and making sure that there's compliance. So, that's, that's as much as I can say, I think, but of course, I will say more if there's questions, and, and we hope that you can get behind this proposal, particularly once the details are, are smoothed out. I understand that Jason has been involved in some of the discussions, and I hope that you will be kept apprised of what's going on. It's not, it's, sometimes that doesn't happen, no one knows that the way I do. So, anyway, are there any questions, or, or is there anything I can get or say?
I do have a couple of questions. Penny, have you started to work on the definitions?
Yes.
So, what's the definition of a disturbance?
Of a land disturbance?
Yes.
I think, I think I circulated the definitions with the bylaw that was, was circulated to you, but if, I can tell, also tell you, land disturbing activities is any activity, or, let's see if there's a land disturbance, so land disturbing activities are, are activities that cause a change in the position or location of soil, sand, rock, gravel, or similar earth material, including without limitation, earth fill, earth moving, earth removal, clearing, grubbing, or grating. I, I would point out that the zoning laws state, the zoning bylaws state that 300 square meters of disturbance merits a permit, or 10,000 square feet of overall disturbance. That's under, is it zoning law 12, I believe?
Yeah, the fill, fill and earth removal?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, 300?
300 square meters, that's what, that's what-
Cubic?
Cubic, yeah, cubic, I'm sorry, cubic meters.
Cubic yards or meters? Are we going to-
So, I, I, I think, I think that you're probably already permitting similar disturbances or, or about the same amount of disturbance, so I don't think it should be a huge change, but I think for this, we realize that, that there will be more attention paid to, to the whole, to the whole matter now, and so you do need staffing help.
Yeah, part, part of the problem is, well, first of all, I don't think we've done, other than recently at 175 Granada Street, the Cape Antul Company, I don't think we've done any-
I can't think of any.
Removal or addition applications, which probably means that it's being done, but no one's paying attention to it.
That's-
And that's the, that comes into the enforcement part of it, and that's what you and I have talked about, is that, I mean, this is landing on the planning board's doorstep-
Yep.
-for a variety of reasons, and I won't go into those, but we're not an enforcing agency, so this need to have someone to do that is important.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, just, just getting back to the definitional aspect of it, then there is the measurement of it, and then there's the interpretation of it. I mean, I just, I can see all kinds of thorny issues being raised here, and challenges from applicants, if we don't have the definitions down.
I'm, I'm happy to, we, we plan to go to fall town meeting with this. If there are ways that we can change the definitions that would make them more clear in your view, I'm certainly happy to look at that. Most of our definitions are, we're, what we're doing is drawing on language used in other Massachusetts towns, just because we're all in it together, and we're all working off of the requirements of the Stormwater Handbook, which is the state stormwater management, basically, guidance to towns, and most towns have very similar, I, I mean, that definition is everywhere, you know, it's, it's so, I suspect that, I, I did not look to see if it had, that particular definition had been challenged in court, or what the court had said, but I think it would also be appropriate, if there are things that particularly you think are awry, we can go to town council and ask them to please tell us what's been done about that.
You mentioned stormwater.
Yep.
So, there's a document referred to as an SWP 3, a stormwater prevention and pollution plan.
Yep.
Is that what we're referring to here, or referring to something simpler than that when it comes to managing and monitoring stormwater flow?
I think that probably we're talking about something more complicated.
Well, and SWP 3 is much, is very complicated, it can be.
A stormwater management plan, that sounds like that's what that is, and in addition, there needs to be an erosion and, an erosion control and sedimentation control plan, and I think probably, whatever that stormwater management document is, would be probably at least the starting place, but to tell you the truth, I haven't, I, my understanding has been that 8D has not ever been enforced. And in fact, when I went and asked for stormwater permits under 8C or 8D, and 8C also requires a plan for stormwater, any stormwater that's going to be making its way into the MS4, that there were no permits that had been issued for either one. However, I have also been told that there is a permitting process through DPW for 83, uh, 8C, rather, the stormwater connections into the storm drain.
Oh, yeah.
So, I, you know, I, I'm told one thing, and then another, and to tell you the truth, I don't know. I, I do know, I can get up here and solemnly swear that I asked for all the stormwater permits, so that I could understand things like that, and was told that none existed.
I've been on this board since 2018, and I've never seen one, nor have I even forget coming to the planning board, I've never heard of one. And part of the problem is that when, you know, an application comes into the building inspector, which is where all these things start-
Yep.
-that there's no recognition of this as a trigger, it's just, it's not looked at.
Yeah.
And the difference is now, supposedly, it's going to be looked at by somebody, and say, hey, you know what, you've got to get a permit.
Yeah.
Because the applicant isn't going to come in and say, oh, yeah, I need a stormwater management permit, don't I? No, they're going to, you know, submit their plans, and hold their breath, and hope that nobody finds out.
Yeah.
But that, that's what's going to have to happen.
Yeah.
So-
Well, based on the de minimis, every project that comes in that calls for a, say, a, a ground-up replacement of an existing structure is going to require this, based on square footage.
Yes.
Yeah.
And every new house, too. I, I-
Oh, that's really what I meant.
And every new house will need it, one as well. But, I mean, it, when you think about some of what has happened with stormwater and new developments lately, you can see that there is reason for, for doing this, it's, it needs to be done.
Stormwater is doing more damage than ocean-
You gotta, you gotta speak into your mic.
Stormwater is doing more damage than ocean rise these days.
Than, than what?
Than ocean rise.
Yeah, well, it, I mean, it's a big deal.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay, do you-
Another question.
Another question. On the land disturbing activity, it says it includes clearing, and then I go to the definition of clearing, and it includes irreversible damage to trunks. That would make me think cutting down trees is land disturbance. Is that the intent?
Uh, yes, I mean, again, did I personally sit down, or any member of our, our group, our committee, sit down and say, this is what it should be? But that's what it has been, the clearing has been, that is an activity that has been considered land disturbance under our bylaws, as long as we've had 8D in the bylaws, and it has not been changed, okay?
Well, it says here, any activity that removes the vegetative surface cover in part, or, in part, or it's an entirety, that causes irreversible damage to the roots or trunks. So, if you-
Bulldoze.
-a plant, that would be irreversible damage to the roots.
Sounds to me, if you chainsaw the trunk, it's also considered clearing.
And if you chainsaw it, and such that it dies, but it's still there, that's also clearing under this definition.
This isn't necessarily inherently forbidding tree clearing, I mean, you can go in and cut one tree down, and you wouldn't trigger this at all, because it's, you're not within the 2,000 square feet.
You don't meet the threshold.
Yeah, it wouldn't be a 2,000 square foot tree, I imagine you might need to-
Old growth, that's really old growth, yeah.
Those are nicely saved trees, all by itself.
Tree as big as a house.
Area of the trunk, not the area of the root system, I guess, okay.
Yeah, I think grubbing was in there, too, which is basically just bush hogging, I guess.
So, Penny, what's, what's next?
Well, what's next is, we're hoping that we will get, we will hear that the town has successfully negotiated with someone who is amenable, that you're amenable to, and to, to be your enforcing and compliance monitoring person, and that you will get up at the town meeting, along with the conservation board, the water, ad hoc water committee, and the DPW, and say, yes, we need this, at the fall town meeting. We plan to be at the, this was, this has been on the agenda for the fall town meeting last year, and for the spring town meeting this year, and then polled for various reasons, including you guys having so much business before the town meeting, but we really, really think we need to do it, especially as some fairly big projects are being considered now, and talked about, and we just need to have this on the books, understood, and regulations out there, so that, so that it's, just, it becomes part of the routine for building in Rockport.
What, what about the regulations? They seem to be part and parcel of the, the whole scheme, so are they, are we going to wait till this is adopted at town meeting, and then start to work on the regulations, or are they going to be worked on at the same time that you're working on this?
Um, I think that's up to you. I think you can make an assessment of how likely we are to get, get through the town meeting. We are trying to line everybody up, and, and have it be an orderly process, we think we, I have not, I am not aware of any big resistance to lowering the amount of land disturbance required, or to the planning board's involvement, and so I'm assuming that that is going to pass. The most resistance is to parts of 8C, and the only part of 8D that I think is, is a problem, possibly, is that we are retaining language that would allow the DPW to go for a stormwater utility at some point, which would be a management, a tax, kind of a, it would, it would raise funds that were earmarked for stormwater management uses, and that would be paid by people who use the stormwater system in some way. But I, I know DPW wants that to remain in there, there is opposition, but I, it's Toby, I don't know, I don't, I don't know how organized, or how many people agree with him. I, I should think that the need to make sure that stormwater no longer is as big a problem as this has been in this town, I mean, we had sewage flowing into the harbor because of stormwater, I mean, we've got to manage it. Maybe that we do need it, I, but I think that's the only thing that I have seen any glimmer of controversy, as, you know, you go and say 7,500 square foot, everybody goes, okay, you say 2,000 square foot, they say, okay, you say, well, maybe 500, and then 2,000, they say, okay. So, I, I'm not, I, you know, I'll be a little surprised if this turns into a, to a fight, and, but, and DPW says it's in this year's budget, and that you, you know, that there is money there. I mean, you may want to spend some time with Weston and Sampson, or ask them for, you know, for the first draft, you know, ahead of time, that's, but that's, fortunately, not my ballot, wick, that'll be yours.
So, you, I think you just answered my question, was, who is responsible for the, initiating the draft of the regulations that are, that support this bylaw, and it sounds as though you're saying that the planning- And it sounds as though you're saying that the planning board is.
I, I suspect so. And I suspect if you want to see what Weston and Sampson would like, if you went and read Dedham's regulations, which I think are a little convoluted and not entirely supported by Dedham's bylaws, but they're, they're there. I think that's what Weston and Sampson thinks, I, Dedham has been held up to me as a shining ideal. So I presume that they would, you know, hold them up to you in a certain way, that way.
More questions?
On, on the issue of whether there has been opposition, I think at least one member of the conservation commission did push back, saying that there was perhaps an impediment to further development and that might affect affordable housing.
There, there has been some talk, yes, there was somebody on the conservation, you're, you're right, who said that, but I, I have to admit, I didn't really understand what they meant. And if, if we're talking forty B, there are ways to, to go around the strict requirements of whatever we've got in place on stormwater. And if we're talking about other affordable housing, I, I don't know whether we want, you know, I guess the town or someone has to figure out whether we think affordable, you know, making housing a little more affordable at the cost of a lack of stormwater management is a good idea. And that isn't for my committee. I mean, we're, we were supposed to just be reviewing this every 10 years to see if it makes sense. And we've gone kind of out of that remit already, further than I feel terribly comfortable with.
No, I only meant that there, there could be some opposition from someone with those sorts of opinions.
Yes, for those, those sorts of concerns. But again, I, I didn't, I didn't take that as being, yes, there's discussion, there will be discussion, I'm sure. This is Rockport.
I mean, opposition?
People will have plenty to say.
Is there gonna be opposition?
Is there gonna be somebody taking?
Do I need to tell you about it?
There is luckily, I see that a hundred, there's an exemption for a hundred cubic yards of soil or other material alter, alteration of drainage patterns for single family dwellings. That's accepted. So there's a lot of, there's a whole list of exceptions there to keep us sane.
Yes.
So otherwise, we'd have to have somebody watching the trucks from all the landscaping companies in the area and where they're going every minute.
Is this, is this a parallel to site plan review or would this just be added to site plan review?
Well, it wouldn't be incorporated.
Distinction without a difference. It wouldn't be incorporated in the site plan review bylaw. Would be its own, it's its own standalone bylaw, but it would be part of the whole site plan or subdivision picture.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I actually think we did it with Stonehaven.
We did to a certain extent.
We moved contours, we moved grade changes.
Yeah.
We moved those rain gardens without engineering expertise, but they provided some of that.
But I don't think we can rely on that going forward.
That was the level of, that was the level of review I experienced on my last planning board. It would just come in as part of site plan review.
Yeah.
Environment, you know, are the hay bales in the right place during construction, those kinds of.
Well, this is during and post.
Yes.
When it's finished, yeah.
I, I should, I actually, I forgot to mention, and I'm glad I've been reminded because I don't want to tell you stories, that there's a further provision here that is new. And it is, I, I have circulated it to you and it's in yellow, which means, you know, look at it. And it is in section eight D, let's see, section four G.
Four G.
That a stormwater management compliance certificate will be issued upon the application of the permittee. And then the permittee will need to record that, that compliance certificate in Essex County with the deed. So that's an additional thing that the planning board would need to manage. That is from, once again, the Dedham, the Dedham stormwater management bylaw and was strongly suggested by the consultants, Weston and Sampson.
I have it open. I'm looking at it right now.
Okay.
It, it, it just directs you back to the state regs in most of it.
Yes.
Um, wow. It's a lot.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah. Um, you know what would be helpful if you could, we got this in our packet.
Mm-hmm.
I'm assuming you sent it by email. If you could send it again, Penny, with paginated.
Sure.
That would be helpful. Just makes it easier to reference.
I see all kinds of engineering in this document. So from an enforcement perspective, I don't see how it can be us.
Well, we, it isn't going to be us. And I think.
Yes.
We've already talked about that. The planning board is not enforcing.
No.
We can issue a permit, but the enforcement is, gotta be someone else. And that's been, that's been an issue.
We've also.
And hopefully one that will be resolved.
And, and we've also done quite a bit of talking to DPW about the need during, there's, there's a provision here that, that there will be kind of, the town can hire a consultant at the permittees' expense to offer engineering and other expertise. I should think that DPW will just have to have in its budget enough that if we find compliance problems, we can also get Weston and Sampson or someone else who is kind of, as I understand the way it works, is there will be a company that does this for the town. Where both when you're issuing a permit and when you're looking at compliance and who can, who will provide the expertise, because we've been told a million times, nobody has it in town. So I think that is, we've just got to have the money to get somebody who does know what they're doing out here. That's, you know.
Any other questions, Penny? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And now you're going to be left all on your own again because, you know.
You're leaving.
Bob's gone, I'm gone. I'm, I'm sure it's going to be a fascinating meeting, but dinner calls.
Has this, this has gone to a public hearing? No. This particular version?
This particular version has not.
Has not, okay.
And overall, one has, the plan is that it will go again to a public hearing, kind of in late June. And then, and then it's going to be, nobody's going to stop us getting it done. Nobody's going to stop me. I'll just, I will go outside of, of the town hall and, you know, burn myself or something. I'll commit some sort of dramatic act if we can't get it, get it at least in front of the town.
Is there, is there any value in separating the vote on the trigger number as opposed to the rest of the regulation?
What vote are you talking about?
You're talking about a vote at town meeting?
Yeah.
I'll leave that up to the people who know better.
Okay.
Could be.
It, I, I think we're, we're trying, we're, we're, we're probably, there was some talk of, of taking the stormwater utility out and we did decide that we wouldn't. That's just going to be in there. We, it's, the language is old language. And if we don't pass anything at all, it'll still be in there.
I'm just imagining a future where somebody says, oh, twenty thousand square feet, they should do an environmental protection plan. I'm not so sure about two thousand.
Yeah. I mean, that's, it's, that's interesting. I'll, I'll talk it, about it to my committee.
Yeah, this, this looked, to me, looks like a heavy burden.
It's not going to be nothing.
A heavy burden.
It's, it's not going to be nothing.
The bigger the project, the easier it is to carry the burden. It's the little ones that, you know, you're doing two thousand square feet on a ten thousand square foot.
Suppose someone could stand up at town meeting and amend, move to amend the threshold or something, you know?
And make it like two hundred square feet or something?
Whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Just be prepared.
Yeah. Well, I think, I think I've, I've seen, I've seen what to be prepared for.
Yeah.
And yeah, we're going to do our best, but sometimes you just throw yourself, I think, on the mercy of your fellow man. And you may rue that, but that's what you do.
Thank you, Penny.
Okay, thank you.
Hi Denise.
All right, our replacement audience has arrived.
Just in time to fill in for.
Are you second shift?
Night.
Good night.
Thanks.
Should get overtime? Uh, now five and six. We, this is, we do this every year. We vote to select a chairman and vice chairman for the coming year, two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-four. So floor is open for any nominations?
I will nominate Jason Shaw for chair.
Got it, the mic has to hear you.
Peter Cutner has seconded.
Seconded by Peter.
Second nomination.
Any discussion? Let's do a vote.
Will you accept?
I will accept. Yes. Thank you, guys.
Would you like me to run the, oh, I have to run this, the vote because you're.
Yeah, I can't run my own vote.
You can't run your own vote?
Right.
All right, the motion to elect Jason Shaw as chair has been moved and seconded and there's no further discussion. Let's take a vote. I don't think it needs to be roll call. Let's just say, all in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? The chair is yours again, sir.
Thank you, folks. Great working with all of you, really. It's a great, really, this is a great planning board. I think it's the best planning board Rockport has ever had. I really do. Not that I, you know, I've been around that long, but from what I can see.
And that's scary.
Make, make a note that the entire audience has agreed with you.
The audience has agreed unanimously.
It's, it's certainly the best planning board that Rockport currently has.
Well, that's true. Yeah. All right, well, let's go to vice chairman. Vice chairman, nominations for vice chairman.
Nominate Tom Mekus.
Tom Mekus.
I'll second.
Seconded, nominated by Peter, seconded by Harry. Any discussion?
I would accept.
You would accept? Okay. So we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No one opposed? Congratulations, Tom.
Thank you.
For being vice chairman of two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-four. Uh, next item, selection of planning board representative for the CPC. Usually this is a, a rolling obligation, honor, whatever you want to call it, that every year someone different gets the role of being on the CPC. And who is it this year?
Here.
Peter.
Yeah. So we need someone for next, this coming year. And anybody interested in doing that, I guess?
Well, I, since I'm doing the affordable housing thing, I guess I could, makes sense for me to take that on.
Yeah, I mean, you, it's more than affordable housing.
Yeah, yeah, it's, there's other, other things.
Stolen out money.
Yeah.
Basically, right, Peter?
For all different causes. But, but that might mean, yeah, I was going to say that might, I don't know how it all works, but that might mean I'd have to recuse myself a lot of times.
From?
From voting on housing trust.
Because he's on the board. Oh, right, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Wow.
So, I don't know how many.
Who else?
How many votes there will be, but there might be quite a few.
I think I need to demure only because I'm still gainfully employed as compared to you guys. Getting back, just, you know, being available for these meetings is challenging enough.
I'd love to do it.
You want to do it again?
Yeah.
Can you say that loud into your mind?
I would love to do it.
Okay. Well, since Peter is really the one willing.
And experienced.
To do it and he has experience, which is good.
I have a letter from Ruth.
Yeah. I will, anybody want to nominate Peter Cutner to be on the CPC for the next year, two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four?
I move that the board nominate Peter Cutner to be on the CPC.
Second.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Congratulations, Peter. You're honored for another year.
Thank you.
Okay. Member items.
So I circulated earlier this week in a, an email, no, actually it was a Gloucester Times article regarding cell, what is it, cell signaling. Company that's based on the North Shore. It was a spinoff from another highly successful biotech company on the North Shore. They've, they control, they own fifty acres in Manchester, including the area on which the Manchester Athletic Club sits. But they actually are presenting, I believe in June, an application to build or start to build a campus. I think its relevance to Rockport is that, you know, there is a parking component to this application and a two-story parking garage that is proposed to be built. But the number of parking spaces will be reduced from what is acceptable under Manchester's parking ordinance. So I, I think that's, that's an application that we should watch carefully as it evolves. There are going to be something like eventually four hundred and fifty to four hundred and seventy-five employees in two buildings that will flank this, this parking garage. So I expect we could learn from that.
This is at the location of the Manchester Athletic Club?
Yes.
Which will be no longer existent?
I don't know. I, I am, I could see the applicant folding the Manchester Athletic Club into it. They own it now, they're managing it, perhaps as an amenity for their employees that they hope to move there. But, you know, one aspect of course is, is, is the parking, but talk about just the need for housing on the North Shore.
I was going to say, that's, that's a whole bunch of more housing.
So.
Yeah.
And it's, it's, it's not really convenient to the train station in, in Manchester.
It isn't.
It's, it's out by one twenty-eight.
Yeah.
It's in an area that was recently rezoned by this town of Manchester, limited industrial, commercial, whatever it is. So we'll see, but I, I think, you know, eventually I expect we're going to see something, perhaps not of the scale, but something with similar implications for the town of Rockport.
We have a unique problem here of trying to separate in people's minds parking for tourists and parking for themselves. And it sure gets muddied up with everybody talking back and forth at town meeting.
Say that again?
Well, people reacted to the changing of requirements for on-property parking for residences.
Yeah.
And used examples of how hard it is to get for tourists to. And used examples of how hard it is to get for tourists to park, how hard it is to get around downtown. Somehow we have to separate those two to make it effective.
Yeah, well, I, you know.
Yeah.
I don't know when parking's going to come up again at a town meeting at this point. Because we have, as you know, a mandate from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, from the Department of Housing and Community Development, to come up with 657 multifamily housing units in the town of Rockport by the end of zoning for that, by the end of 2024.
Not knowing how many we currently have.
A thousand parking spaces.
Yeah. And we did go to, we, I did receive an email recently, it's, and you, you forwarded it to me also, from Nate Carlucci at the Department of Housing and Community Development, saying that there are fast-track grants available to retain consultant for, to help the town with developing a plan for this multifamily housing. And that the application needs to be filed by June, I think it's 7th, 2nd? And that, yeah, that they say we anticipate having a contract by the end of June. Now, I don't quite understand what that means, because do they mean a contract between them and the town? Or between the town and a consultant? Because that's really short amount of time. But I did bring it to Mitch's attention. You know, we really do have to start focusing on this and getting someone in there to review our zoning, our current housing situation, the current density, and where we can come up with zoning that would allow for, you know, that many multifamily housing units. And we need to start it now. So that's, hopefully we'll, Mitch will get on it. I think he realizes the, you know, this is an opportunity that the, that the state is, you know, giving us to do it and do it quickly.
So how does this relate to the housing production plan?
Uh, it relates, but it's, it's really separate. It's a separate, completely separate thing.
Some of the same data you would expect to be needed.
The grant, the grant funding is available for a number of different matters.
They're talking specifically about, this email was talking specifically about the multifamily housing under 3A. So I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention.
So did, have you looked at it? Do they have standard language in there for, to make it sort of fill in the blanks and submit your, submit your RFP?
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't been that much yet, but I will be. And they also have, as part of that same email, a, an actual exemplar zoning law.
Yeah, I, I did read through that.
Did you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's good. It's got a lot of, a lot of commentary and a lot of notes and.
Yeah, I haven't read that.
Makes it pretty easy to go through. So that, that'll help us a lot.
Yeah.
Uh, of course, it doesn't. Part of the problem is it, it sort of refers to sort of some normal zoning charts and stuff that many towns have, like a parking chart and things like that. So we're gonna have to revise some of that, but I don't think we want to get involved in changing our boilerplate at this point with, with that. Anyway, um. Yeah, so I read, I read through that, but if there's anything I can do to help with pushing that through.
Try anything, Denise, you're the liaison that we can do to, yeah. Because that's, I mean, obviously, that's really soon. And then we have Memorial Day weekend in between.
We had the CPC meeting on Tuesday. It was meeting three of, we've divided these proposals into three groups. And there's only, there's only eight proposals.
Only eight proposals?
Yeah. It totals about a million dollars, and we have about a million eight to give out. You know, it's compounded during the COVID years and some projects that didn't happen. It's a great group of little things and big things and what have you. And you had to withdraw the housing trust.
Yeah, because you have to, our proposal had to be focused on a specific degree. And the trustees at the Methodist Church decided to bow to the gods of capitalism.
Go in the open market.
Yeah, it's, I, I understand it's under agreement already.
Yeah. So.
Really?
Yeah.
So the group we wrote the letter for had to withdraw, and that was a request for 500,000, so half of it was for that. So instantly, two others increased their asks to 500,000. But they range from Granite Street Crossing, 70% of the initial submissions were for housing. And the way the rules go, you have to have at least 10% for open space in Rec and at least 10% for historical preservation. But the rest can go up and down in between. And, but it was 70% for housing. So since then, so Granite Street Crossing was just 175,000 inflation, pure and simple.
That was just this year?
Yeah.
That's on top of prior years?
Yeah.
So do you have any sense of the total that they've received for that project?
I don't know what the total, I don't have a, I can find it.
Doesn't sound sustainable to me. Well, if the town keeps giving them that kind of money, of course, it's going to be sustainable. We can't.
Hey Denise, can I, I think you need to.
They're gonna be open before they need.
You need to put in a, speak in front of a mic. I know it's in, no, I can't, but it's being recorded.
Oh, we're being recorded. See if one of those works, just push the.
Yeah, no, I can hear you, it's just, yeah.
And there's 36,000 for a feasibility study for looking at nature trails to make them accessible. Which is, and, and they have a, I forget the name of the company, VRC, Land Use Landscape Company, who showed a lot of other trails that are accessible, which are kind of exciting.
When you say accessible, you mean accessible by?
You can get them in a wheelchair possibly.
Well, yeah, this is like what, who was it? Wally Hess came up with something for.
The Headlands.
Except the Headlands accessibility and kind of ran into a buzzsaw with that one, so.
The, um, the, the ones I saw are quite nice, you know, and they don't always get as far, and they don't get everywhere, and they don't, you know.
Yeah.
But they're going to look at four different sites around town and see which ones are most cost-effective for accessibility. So that's a study. The conservation, the Concom once asked for 100,000 to build up their reserves. They need to be able, when property comes available, they need to be able to jump on a piece of property and get the process started. But they can't right now. They have about 500,000 in their reserves. Because I think they saw what the numbers were, they saw what the excess was, they saw that you had dropped out. They've increased that to 535,000, essentially double what they have now, so a little over a million bucks.
So they, they want money so what, they can go out and buy property?
Yeah.
What?
Open space.
Just kind of on their own?
Project open space. Oh, no, it's still got to go through the selectmen.
Yeah.
It's got to go through.
That's what it's for.
No, I understand that, but I don't, I mean, I didn't know that they had that kind of authority where they can say, hey, we like that property and.
Every, you got burned because you didn't have a specific space. A municipal land trust or the Concom are the two exceptions to that rule, that they can go out and they need immediate access to the money and they can act faster. It's, faster is a funny term in town politics, though, I mean, they can act a little faster.
Right.
They can get somebody to stop and pay attention to them to go through the procurement process.
This is the method they use to buy woodland acres in the past.
Yeah, they've bought six properties, I think, over time.
Woodland acres is the most recent.
Yeah. But anyway, so they need cash on hand. Then there's a vulnerability analysis of, Rockport Municipal Vulnerability Analysis, and this is 50,000. And I think, I think I saw in the meeting notes, there was Toby maybe asked questions about how many vulnerability studies are. There's a bigger grant that we're applying for, and we're going to CPC to get the town's share of what you contribute to get the bigger 200, $250,000 grant. And so that would be an analysis of the, the shore of Rockport.
Wait, a grant, a $250,000 grant to study the shore?
To study, no, vulnerability.
250,000?
Yeah. And then there's a T-WARF stabilization, that's 40,000 for engineering services. And then there's a community preschool playground, which is 52,000. And the Old Harbor Kayak Racks, which is the littlest project at 15,000. That's an old harbor, there's, I think, three racks right now, which do like 30 kayaks, they're going to get four 12 kayak things to do 48 kayaks. And we've asked them to increase that amount and look at a couple other locations around Rockport that might be serviced. Loblawi Point, I think there's been some discussion, they'd like them down there. There are some that are just laying on the rocks. And, and so they, we were encouraging them to ask for more. And then we've had an 11th hour submission from the Rockport, from the Municipal Land Trust, who I think jumped when you were in there. But there's a big question about whether we let people come in three months late.
Right. I think we got a letter about that recently, but it's not on the agenda tonight because it's too late about, you know, a letter of support for that. I don't want to discuss it at this point.
In the past, I think even this year, the Old Har, the Old Harbor Kayak Rack was like a day late. So we had a meeting to decide whether to allow them in, does that open the floodgates for people coming in later? But it was before our first meeting, it was understandably just a day late. And we hadn't met, we hadn't discussed anything, we hadn't added anything up. So there's some concern about this. On the other hand, it is housing. It's a huge chunk of what we'd be giving out for housing. On the other hand, I think there's only been two meetings of the board. We have no idea what they're even going to do. So it's, we're going to meet again and talk, we're going to ask them to come in and talk about it, what the options are. Anyway.
Okay.
That's where we are now.
Yep. Any other member items?
Uh, webinar I can recommend. It's been recorded on May 10th. Sponsored by Cape Town Climate Coalition. The title was Financing Climate Adaptation. Professor Jesse Keenan, now at Tulane. It was hosted by Harvard. And it was talking about the effects of climate vulnerability on property values and municipal revenue, and how to go forward with that sort of thing. It's currently on YouTube, so it's available for anyone who wants to look up Financing Climate Adaptation.
Thank you. Okay, if there are no other member items, no public comments, public comment. Oh my God.
We've prepared a lectern just for you.
You are the public.
Don't you miss them?
Denise Donnelly, 72 Pigeon Hill Street. I would like to ask the planning board to consider putting forth a bylaw that would require buildings that have commercial uses on the first floor in the downtown district to, to maintain those commercial uses so that upper floors could become residential, but that the first floor, the ground floor remain commercial use. And I think they have this in Beverly, they adopted this in Beverly. And I think there's a lot of concern about what's happening on Bear Skin Neck, Feather and Wedges for sale now. I spoke with the gentleman who ran the leather shop for almost 50 years. He was given 30 days to vacate the building. He has $60,000 worth of inventory in his living room because he didn't know that the building was being sold and is now an Airbnb. So it's just happened so many times in the downtown district that I think there would be a lot of support for this in town if you could put, bring this forward at the next town meeting.
Why did I think that we already had that in place specifically for Bear Skin Neck?
Nope.
First floor was commercial and.
No, it just happened. This just happened within the last six months. So, no, there's nothing in place now.
Okay, well, that's, that's something to be looked at. Yeah, we've talked, there have been some discussions over the years about that. It's kind of like economic forces are at play here because somehow the commercial spaces, for the building owner, not, not for the occupant, but for the owner, somehow they can get more money or rent if they turn it into residential, which is, it seems a little topsy-turvy. But, you know, it's, that's what's happening apparently. You should bring it with you.
It's not straightforward residential, it's Airbnb properties, and that's how they turn a profit. And so it's removing commercial properties from a commercial district. And it's also removing residential opportunities because they, they want to monetize it, understandably. But it's working in Beverly, from what I can see, so I think we should consider it.
Well, it would be a good idea for us to contact the planner in Beverly and see what's going on there. But that's something to, definitely something to look at.
When you look at the vehement at-town meeting over just the idea that you wouldn't be able to restore your shop if more than 50% of it was destroyed, people were adamant that they were out to save retail on Bear Skin Neck.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
Any other kind of move from member items into public comment? Public has commented. The public and make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that move.
Motion by Harry, seconded, who seconded?
Okay.
Peter?
Peter seconded.
Seconded, okay. All in favor to adjourn?
Aye.
I opposed, meeting is adjourned, it's 7:40. Thank you, folks. Just.
Since none of us said our names and voices, should we all do that at the end of the meeting for our transparent?
We do that. Actually, I was gonna say too, we really, this is somewhat new, but we really have to make an effort to keep our microphones close to us.
I know, I started out.
Really close, like that? Yeah, it's very hard to hear you, and I hope our, the guys, this is being picked up, but just.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's a little different, keep your mic close, speak up into the mic.
I need to get my earphones from Zoom, because then the microphone stays exactly where it's supposed to be. Anyway, Peter Cutner, this is my voice.
Peter Cutner, go ahead. I don't want to be Peter Cutner.
This is Peter Cutner's voice.
This is Bob Simmons' voice.
This is Jay. This is Jason Shaw's voice.
This is Tom Mekus speaking through a mask.
And this is Harry Korsland's voice.
Thank you, gentlemen. Have a good night.